I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God. And invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. I need approval of the agenda.
There's no additions or corrections. I'd make the motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any more discussion? It is. If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We need approval of minutes from September sixteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Felt like they read well. Um, I'll make a motion to approve this.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, first item on the agenda is secondary roads. We have two utility permits from Manning Municipal Utilities and good morning, Zach.
Good morning. Uh, yes, both from many municipal utilities, uh, one for natural gas and one for fiber. So, uh, the first one is, uh, just southwest of Carroll here a little ways, Roselle, section three, uh, along two hundred and twentieth street. Um, this is for a new natural gas service, uh, to that property. Tying into the main that's there and getting it onto that property. Nothing, uh, out of the ordinary in what they're trying to do from that standpoint.
Can we combine them?
I think so. Any questions on that one?
That's the Sean Trader one.
That's, that's correct. The second one is for, uh, fiber expansion. Um, this would be southwest of Halbrook, I guess, uh, Washington Township, section twenty-five, twenty-six, and thirty-five. There's a kind of pieces of a couple different miles there that they're looking to serve a few additional customers, uh, extend on to what they already have there. So, again, follow the same, uh, protocol that we have for putting fiber in as we're pretty accustomed to here the last two years. So.
I'll make a motion to approve that one.
I'll make a motion to approve both. I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Just a quick update, um, the children projects coming along well, um, with the weather holds out, we should be really close to being done this week. So, um, and there were a couple of things that we needed to do to finalize everything else as well. So, but we're gonna make a lot ahead of it. So, I hope it's done very well, keep it moving and, um, good weather. It's turning out pretty nice.
He told me, he told me Saturday, uh, at a function that he thought with beans with no rain, it'd probably be out in the middle of the week. They would be.
Yeah, we missed the five days of rain supposedly.
It's unfortunate. We needed it.
Yeah.
Going well, um, really, really no complaints at all.
No, it really looks good.
Even some of the early stuff that we have seeded, when we did get some rain, grasses already grown. So that's good to see too. So, that's really all I had.
Thank you, Zach.
Thanks, Zach.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is to approve payables in the amount of four hundred and fifty thousand, four hundred and seventeen dollars and forty cents. I had one question, but received my answer prior to the meeting.
I think we all had that same question.
Yeah.
In the jail, the, the food, what's the difference between food and inmate food?
Nothing. Same thing. Yeah, just different description, maybe different person that put it in.
Okay.
You know, so same thing.
Yeah, it just appears. I mean, known from the public has said this, but it appears illegal to be our own or something like that. It's not labeled inmate food. So.
And we can change that, you know?
Yeah, we can just remember during budget season to have those two lines combined. I know we've got another line item that we need to fix once we start into budget season.
I couldn't imagine you were, but I just didn't know what the label does.
I'll make a motion to approve payables of four hundred and fifty thousand, four hundred and seventeen dollars and forty cents.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, the next item on the agenda is to approve the fiscal year twenty-four annual financial report. Did everybody have a moment to take a look at this? And I know I did take some time and go into Courtney's office and try to understand a little bit more why we had budgeted for some extra money that wasn't utilized. Do you want to expand into that a little bit, Courtney?
Sure, sure. Um, so I tried this. I don't know, this is like fourteen pages of a lot of numbers. So I included a spreadsheet and I just kind of highlighted some of the ones that I thought were ones to note, um, and I made notes next to them. So the revenues you can see, um, they all came in pretty well. Um, the miscellaneous was quite a bit higher. Um, I probably should have.
Are you going off the spreadsheet now?
I am, yeah. Yep. Um, miscellaneous or use of money and services, that's interest on investments, which is a good thing. Um, just earned a lot more interest than what we budgeted for. Uh, we kind of adjusted that in the fiscal twenty-five budget. Um, next one would be, uh, miscellaneous. So the main thing in that is it was two hundred and thirty-seven thousand, twenty-three dollars higher than what we budgeted. Majority of that was opioid settlement money and then, um, Rhodes had, um, pretty significant miscellaneous revenues. Um, so those were the two main ones that contributed to the two hundred and thirty-seven thousand. Um, and in expenses, um, I highlighted those in transportation again. Theirs is always, we are always sure it came from roadway maintenance and equipment operations was the difference there. Um, a lot of that can be just project or equipment that's not purchased. That's not an unusual amount either to be off. Just kind of depends on the year. Next one is the HVAC remodeling project. We budgeted the whole amount to spend, um, and we didn't spend near that. Um, it kind of got split out between two fiscal years and just to cover our bases, we budgeted it in two different years. So that's that money. Then, yeah. Sort of that's projects, which is not unusual, the project in the year. So, um, those were the main highlights I took. Does anybody have any questions on any other line items?
So back on the, uh, the use of money, that was one thing that I had made note of. We just kind of didn't expect five percent CD interest.
That'd be a really good treasure question because she handles all of our interest and investments, but I would say, yes, she probably budgeted on the low side of it, which is normal. We, we budgeted normal amounts and I think that she may have invested it in higher earnings accounts, CDs, whatever.
Just trending that way.
Um, it must be because when we budgeted the next year, this, this year that we're in now, we budgeted more money. So, yeah.
Am I correct? Can, can a municipality not open a CD for more than twelve months?
That's a good treasure. Yeah, because I don't, I don't handle any of the CDs.
I don't think so. I know, I'd say the landfill's got four and five year.
Right. And again, I'm not recommending, and I'll visit with her about it. I'm not recommending that, you know, we do that because again, right now rates are inverse and even more so than what they were six months ago. Um, but it, it just seems like it's an awful, it was an awful lot off. And, and, I mean, there are things.
In our favor.
Definitely. And, and again, but yet we had all the evidence in the world that things were trending that way as well. So again, you're kind of forecasting roughly eighteen months out. I get that. But, um, I don't, it was just one of the questions I had.
And I'm always calling a swag.
Yeah. Hey, you know, earlier in the month when Courtney had, and I, I, allow me just a couple of comments here. You know, she had sent out, you know, that cash report, you know, earlier in the month or maybe late August. And, you know, looking at that, I saw where, you know, several departments rather significantly underestimated their revenue. And in doing so, we unnecessarily levied more so than what was necessary. And in spite of House File seven fifteen. I think seven fifteen is.
Eighteen.
Or okay, then it, it, it just, you know, wouldn't have been necessary whatsoever. And so it, it takes me to my next comment and, and that's our, our reserves. Uh, but I'm, I'm showing that we've got a, a twelve million dollar reserve here. And I get kind of confused where I was with the city and their guidelines and things like that, but help me understand because right now our reserves are forty-two percent of our expenditures, which is high.
It's big.
Really big. And it, it wasn't it always roughly around twenty-five percent was kind of the ISAC recommendate, recommended guide?
Um, yeah, twenty-five, I think twenty-five, twenty-eight.
So, so where I'm going with this is obviously, you know, too late in fiscal year twenty-five, but, but as you go in, I'm gonna make recommendations to the, the, this board that, you know, theoretically, if, if our expenditures.
I'm sorry. Okay. You mean people can't hear all of this logic? Okay. Better than my, me, right? Battery died. But the, the, the point that I, if, if you look at our property tax revenues, our reserves are exceeding our property taxes collected. So theoretically, and no, I'm not making recommendation here, media, but theoretically, we could take a year off from levying property taxes and still have a reserve. And my point is, as it has always been and historically been, this is taxpayer money and I would like to see this board consider significantly reducing the levy enough to use up some of those reserves and, you know, and in the form, it doesn't come out exactly to a rebate for our taxpayers, but it gives, it certainly equate to significant tax relief. Uh, and in doing so, spend some of that down.
I might be saying this wrong, but isn't it that a little bit skewed? Because like that HVAC and the roads capital projects, the difference there was, uh, forty-five or four million, five hundred thousand just in them, right?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Well, that's, that's the point I was gonna make. You, this is a one point shot in time. So there's a lot of things entered to where those projects are in the middle or whatever that could construe this.
Especially, yeah, with, yep, that, like a roads project that don't get done, there's.
Yeah, whi- whi- which it, it is true, but and again, we've always had this debate, is it wise spending or is it over budgeting? You know, I mean, and, and, you know, you could credit either or, but if I'm not mistaken, I don't, I didn't have it pulled up when I looked it up online at home, our reserves at the end of fiscal year twenty-three were still in excess of eleven. Right?
I'm not sure about, just by recall. Have to go back and look, but yeah.
So again, they, they, they've been there for more than just this year.
When I think in the last few years, we have used some of our reserves to keep cut back. I mean, we have done that in the past.
Yeah, and.
Take some out of reserve instead of.
And I'll know, like, you know, some of these, like the capital projects and the debt service, you know, those monies, we can't re- you know, those are pro-, you know, the projects, they're gonna get spent.
Yeah.
And then in the special revenue, there's a lot of accounts in there. You know, we have, the roads is probably the bigger one, but then we have local option in there. The opioid, opioid money, which we can't touch is in there. So there's various accounts along with levied accounts. So, but you know, we can break, I can break this down by fund and that would be a little more clear on what money is available to offset property taxes in the future for sure. But I, we have done that, you know, we've lowered the supplemental levy by using local option money or even using some general fund money. So.
That's just my points.
Well, I think a lot of department heads want to underestimate their revenue and overestimate spending. It's like, it's not a sin to ask for a budget amendment if you miss something.
I would rather going forward in future years have budget amendments than levy the taxpayers.
Exactly.
We, we used to amend our budget, seems like four times a year. How often are we doing it now?
Um, we average about three.
Three? Okay, so hadn't changed a whole lot.
No.
We, we still.
Yeah, I, and again, I always advocated for that too, just amend the budget and, you know.
But I think it's looked upon by some people as, um, not being able to predict the future, shame on them if they have to ask for a budget amendment. And it's not, yes, it's okay to ask for a budget amendment.
Well, it goes back to the point, when we do that budget, you're looking eighteen months out in the bank. There's a lot of unknowns.
A lot.
Basically, you're doing a lot of guessing and estimating. That's why I call the swag. I teach.
Well, that's good.
Debt service is limited strictly to the jail, right? There's no other debt.
Well, jail and Essex.
Pardon?
Jail and the nine-one-one Essex project.
Sorry, the Essex.
I missed that one. How many years is on that one? You know?
Oh, boy. Um.
I can tell you.
Yeah, I, I don't know. At the top of my head.
Okay. But, you know, I go back to my old days and, you know, when I was going through your, your illustrations there and I see that debt service there and it, it just, you know, it's just something I'm not accustomed to.
Well, yeah, and you know, a lot of people look at debt service as a bad deal, but.
No, it's, yeah, it's not.
Debt service is not a worse thing because that's the only way we can get money out of some of these district.
The jail's roughly seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year. That'll be finished in twenty thirty-nine. And Essex is three hundred and eighty-six thousand a year, and I don't have when that's done.
I think that's.
That is, uh, just a little bit.
You think it's longer than?
I think it is longer than the jail.
I was thinking of the ten-year deal. I might be wrong.
I can look and let you guys know. I have it upstairs.
Wasn't the jail just some stupid rate like one percent?
Well, Nathan Summers came back after the original finance when interest rates got down to and that was a four hundred and some thousand dollar savings.
Yeah.
That was a huge win.
Yeah, so I'm not advocating paying that off or, you know, I'm just saying that I just, I would like to see us spend down some of those reserves.
Well, and I can send you guys, I mean, this is, I use this off the summary sheet, but, um, you can look deeper into this and see it by fund, what the reserves.
I think you sent us that like three weeks ago.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
And I think if you take those, like those capitals and those funds that we can't spend out of, then our reserves probably are not as.
Yeah, well, here I can.
You think, yeah.
So, um, I can go by fun, guys can know. Um, so the general fund had two, I'm gonna just kind of round up here, two point six million in reserves. Supplemental was a hundred and fifteen thousand, so not much. General other, um, that is going to be the opioid money. Leave, oh, no. HVAC project. Money needs to get transferred back to local.
I'm a.
Pardon me.
We'll move that back into there.
So how much was in the other?
What?
That, what, the one that you just said? The other, general other?
Four hundred and sixty thousand.
Oh, okay.
That's lost money.
Yeah. Loss. Okay.
Services. Six hundred and twenty-four thousand. Roads five point nine. And then other is gonna be local option, um, opioid, attorney collection, recorders, records management, there's.
Is that G E M T payment?
Um, that's in the general fund.
General.
Yeah. So that's one point four million. Uh, majority of that is local option because that's over a million. Project six hundred and fifteen thousand. Debt service, a hundred and forty-five thousand. So that's broken out by fund.
The six fifteen once again was.
Uh, capital projects.
Capital.
What was one, the one point four before that?
That's all other. So a majority of it's your lost money because that's well over a million dollars. And then there's attorney collection and forfeiture, records management, um, the opioid money.
Secondary.
I went forgetting something.
Five nine.
Five point nine. Yep.
Thoughts?
We now in about nine months now will spend two million of that.
On?
Manning, the Manning shoulder project, who is getting paid now, that's having been taken into account. And then the asphalt down there is a local project as well. And that's gonna be, I'm working estimating more than four million. So that, that project's been pushed and that's part of the reason why that carrier was been hired for us is knowing that was coming. It's just trying to get it all done. And it's, we're there and the asphalt project will be getting let this winter or next, next spring goes up.
You think you, you think that asphalt will be done before fiscal year, end of fiscal year?
I hope it will be, but I don't.
Don't know. Yeah.
I mean, it, we, the, the timeline that we'll, we'll give the contractor will be basically the summer. So, but we're, we're planning letting in, I believe, February.
Yeah.
With your team because we're preparing with some other FM projects that we're gonna do. We'll let them together and try to get economies of scale. So.
Yep.
So beyond the two man Manning, shouldering, what else was there? I missed it.
Manning shouldering for the earth and then the Manning resurfacing of that same three miles with the paved shoulders and researching of that road is the one point four million. So that's.
Podeling two mil? Total.
Eight, one point nine.
Okay.
Between two.
So that'd leave us three point nine.
Correct. I gotta, I'd have to look at my five-year, uh, program to see what else we have coming up. Um, there are some local matches on some structures, I believe, and some small structures that we'll be doing, but, um, and then again, we'll be doing some more asphalt work. I know, um, for sure in twenty twenty-seven that will have local money attached to it as well. So.
Okay.
So.
But we're, but we're still having some revenue in there that would replenish some of that as well.
Well, well, but not, I mean, if we end up doing a million and a half, I'm not a million and a half worth of construction.
Sure.
We won't get replenished that fast, I guess, put it that way.
Okay, this, the conversation is not for my benefit, it's for their benefit. And I, again, as they start thinking about this fall, you know, when it's time to set that levy and make those projections, I think that, you know, having these discussions would be most beneficial, particularly for the taxpayer.
Well, I appreciate your comments and per, um, on probably unpopular opinion potentially, uh, we will probably have it on the agenda coming up, but we will discuss the compensation board. Um, and how we want to proceed as a county. I know we don't have to formally do anything because it's sensational and void. There's nothing, but we would have to have, we decided to keep it, we would have to have a resolution, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Um, but again, I think if we moved away from the compensation board, brought department heads in here, discussed it in open meeting for line item, I think a lot of more discussion will happen. Um, and the taxpayer probably is gonna be more well aware where their money is going.
Okay, but, but that's really not a compensation board practice. The pre-budgeting really is separate from compensation.
It is, but I think, I think kind of just, we're gonna kind of start from scratch. This is gonna be a whole different way. I would like to have it a whole different way this year. One, no compensation board and the department head or elected official comes before the board with that and has to kind of toot their own horn for why they need the salary increases for their own department. If there's been, um, a child change, you know, more responsibility or anything like that, that to really justify why we would need to do any salary increase.
Yeah.
Um, and then topple that with their budget as well. So they'll go through their budget line item by line item, and hopefully we can eliminate or add, um, to their budget, eliminate some of this over levying monies through that whole process. I know that's kind of like bringing three things together, but ideally that is what I would like to see in the future. Obviously, I'm one of five. So it may not, or may not happen, but.
Well, you know, I'll be a constituent by then, but you know, I would certainly support any of those efforts. You know, once again, as the lowly taxpayer. So anyways, that's, that's my comments and I appreciate having the extra time.
Um, I think another special thing to note is if you look at that spreadsheet and look at the total revenues and other sources and then look at the total expenditure and other sources in the general, we had more expenditures than revenues. You know, so we were using reserves and spending that down and also um, not so much in the special revenue, but that general fund we did. So we were spending some of our reserves, but, um, maybe not a ton, but I think it's something that needs to be looked at. You know, we estimate when we're working on our budget, we're estimating what we think we'll have left in there at the end of the year and it's, it's a educated estimate. And, you know, you try to get as close as you can, but you know, sometimes you're, you're a little off, but I, I think we try to do a good job and I don't see anything changing moving forward. Um, we did have that big HVAC project going on, so I think we were a little leery on spending it down too much because we weren't sure what was gonna happen. Um, this building is old and we're a little concerned about our elevator too. Um, we were, weren't sure if we were gonna have to replace that. Knock on wood, it's, it's still holding out, but, um, you know, I think it's important to set money aside for that too. Um, because we know that we're gonna need to do something with the elevator. I mean, it's just a matter of when you guys decide to do it. And I know there's been some talk about the parking lot too. Um, that is, we fixed the one side, the other side is not great. So, anyway.
We also had a huge increase in insurance as well. That was kind of.
We did, and luckily we had reserves to pay for that. Um, but hopefully now that we have seen that huge jump, it won't be that crazy moving forward. I don't know. That.
I think a lot of things happened.
Right. But to your point, Mark, yeah, don't over levy to keep the reserves high.
Well, and I, I really, I wanted to spend a little bit more time on this and maybe I, I mean, I still will, um, you know, before I'm done in fifty-two days, you can start counting it.
Oh, wow.
Get rid of me in fifty-two days. But it, um, and I will, I'll, I'll try and do that before next person takes office, but, um, the Department of Management website, as you all know, is just, boy, did they ruin that. I mean, it used to be so easy to use and now it's, you truly got to be a rocket scientist to figure it out, which I am not. But anyways, I'll, I'll try and spend a little bit more time on that, but I think historically you're gonna see that our reserves are climbing. And, and my point is, is that's the taxpayer. Put it there. I think the taxpayer should be rewarded. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, we're gonna go to the next item, um, on the agenda.
To approve the fiscal.
I need a motion.
So moved.
Done.
There's a motion and a second. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is a manure management annual update. We have one for Jeff Shone, section one Pleasant Valley Township. Uh, he did an annual report and we are two committee reports.
I can go. Uh, last week I know official meetings. Um, tomorrow I have border health meeting at noon. And that is, uh, it. Thank you. Last week, Tuesday, September executive board meeting at the recycling center. Also attended the Carroll County Safety Action Plan Workshop at Swan Lake. Tuesday morning and then at noon was CCGP meeting. And I did talk to a resident, which I think we all did, about using Carroll County in the name of an upcoming corporation. Wednesday, um, I spoke with the Carroll Mayor Jerry about Drain seventy-seven. Thursday, I did stop at the ambulance station with a claim or a question about uh, medical examiner claim that I think we all had. And I also spoke with Marty Chase, uh, Iowa Prison Industries about possibly using prison labor in Drain seventy-seven. And then I met with Zach and Paul about Drain seventy-seven for the request for quote Friday courthouse payables. Um, I also contacted Tony Beatty and about a countertop issue in the treasurer's office, which he's gonna fix this week. And this week, um, maybe go to Evolution of the Heartland. It's an ag tourism thing in Coon Rapids. Gene, I think you were at that meeting where they spoke about that. And Friday, um, a follow-up from the Access DC trip. I'm gonna meet with a, with Congressman Feenstra's staff at the ambulance station with ambulance director Jamie Webber.
I can go. Um, last week I attended that safety meeting at Swan Lake as well. Well-attended. I was very proud of our attendance for Carroll County. Um, then I did have some emails back and forth about the two mile zoning ordinance. Um, Mike, I think is going to go with me tomorrow morning at eight AM. We're gonna meet with Aaron and Jerry Fluschner to discuss the future meeting that is set for October fourteenth. At the city council, um, chambers. Courtney and I did get some clarification. We will be putting up a notice of a public meeting because we'll have a quorum. So we're just gonna cover our bases by not only, uh, because it's going to be happening at the city council meeting, but to cover our basis and to make sure that the taxpayers are well aware that there's going to be a quorum. We're going to post one here and online that will be together at the chamber councils. I was emailing back and forth with the county attorney to get. I was emailing back and forth with the county attorney to get clarification on that. Um, Thursday, I came up to the courthouse, needed to look through the employee handbook, and uh, I noticed I had received a complaint about dress code within the courthouse, and you know, it's our due diligence to express what the taxpayers are feeling. So I did meet with a few department heads, and I'll say it via this as well, so anybody that's watching online. Um, you know, dress accordingly, dress appropriately, and dress professionally. The taxpayers are supplying your income, your paycheck, so, and ultimately, it is up to your elected official or department head to decide what the structure is for your outfit or uniform. We do have departments that have uniforms, but um, if you could dress appropriately, that'd be greatly appreciated. Um, this is a place of business as well, so. And this week, I have the meeting tomorrow at eight AM, and then I have a safety meeting at ten. Correct.
Nate, I need to check maybe on that.
Okay, two to be determined on that. And I think that is it for this week, I think, probably not.
Question about October fourteenth before you move on. Um, and and it's, it's probably wise to CYA that we're posting it as well. I mean, I I don't contend that, but we're not, we're not necessarily anticipating any discernment among our board, are we?
I don't think there'll be a decision made, but I do think there'll be some discussion. And that's kind of why I wanted to meet with them to see how they're going to facilitate this meeting, whether it's strictly going to be a conversation with the Carroll uh, city council. If the board supervisor are gonna be able to speak, are they gonna allow representative from the two-mile, give them five minutes? I just kind of wanted to know how they plan to facilitate this meeting.
Are they, I mean, if if they I would anticipate then that if they would seek your caucus as far as how you plan to discern or decide. Um, uh, we got plenty of time to talk about it, you and me, you know, before, because I'm gonna be gone.
Yeah.
But, you know, I'm, I want to be clearly known my position on this thing, so. Um, if if that should arise, you know where I stand, right? And I doubt it'll change before October fourteenth, but um, you know, I still remain unchanged in my sentiment on that.
Well, the meeting is gonna say, um, forum with discussion for the board of supervisors, because it's not our meeting, or I shouldn't say, it's not your meeting.
But.
So any motions or anything is gonna have to come back and be made here on the following Monday, so.
If they would have, like, all four of you there, and they go, Mike, what's your call on this thing? Scott, you know, I guess i- i- if if they're trying to test the water, then that would constitute some discernment, so.
Well, if if uh, and I'm not saying they haven't, but if they have done their research, I think you can gather a pretty good inclination on how this whole board feels. Um, to an extent. I mean, I would be able to look at our past Zoom meetings and kind of know where everybody's sitting. I would have a good idea of where it was the feeling was, just from comments that people have made.
It seems like they might be getting the cart in front of the horse inviting us to their meeting.
Oh.
Okay, good.
I'll have more information after tomorrow morning, because I have a lot of questions. You should, I think I sent individually the email to to every board member. This is but it's not how I run my meetings, but that's not to decide. It's not for me to decide, so.
Thank you.
Okay, last week I had the radio and newspaper. Uh, and then Tuesday was at the Carroll County um, Stakeholder Safety Action Plan meeting, and then we went to CCGP after that. Um, a lot of different discussions going on there. Uh, then on Friday, I went and attended the Yes Center Board Meeting up at Cherokee, the Juneall Detention Center. Uh, they had a average of eight point seven clients that last month, and on Friday, they were at thirteen. Um, they've had some electrical problems up there, and they tend to got that fixed now. Um, we did have some clients from the out, um, non-member counties that have been up there, and one of them particularly did a lot of damage to one of their cells up there. So, uh, the board did, uh, look at the possibility of thinking they're gonna raise uh, the fees on non-members, um, because.
From a hundred and seventy-five?
Well, they don't, non-members pay, I think it's two hundred, we're gonna probably raise it two and a quarter. Uh, because we're starting to see non-members are bringing probably some of their worser clients there. Because we're more reasonable than some other places. So we're looking at raising that, so. Other than that, um, we're in the state reimbursement, we finally got that this month, and that was a hundred and forty-four thousand, a hundred and seven, six dollars, nine and five cents. And this week, I have, uh, on Tuesday, I'm going to Crisis Service Meeting up at St. Anthony's for mental health, and then also there's policy, policy council on Tuesday night for new, new up, uh, for Head Start. And Wednesday, uh, I got a Rolling Hills Board Meeting, and Thursday will be New Opportunities Board Meeting. That's my week.
My turn. Uh, let's see, Tuesday, attended the secondary road safety seminar as well, the rest of you, don't need to comment that, you were all there. Uh, the, um, on Wednesday, I attended the Coalition of Human Services Meeting, um, you know, was Cindy not attending these?
Is that DCAT function?
Hmm. It it, DCAT is one of the human services. It, it's a lot of new opportunities agencies, but they've always met monthly. Um, I used to always go to a meal, would go to them back in the day. Yeah, and and I I was kind of puzzled that it it's, it's listed on the the committee report or the committee assignments, yeah, but anyways, I I always thought it was very beneficial. I mean, there's seventeen agencies there, at least on on this last Wednesday, and they all, you know, give reports about what they do, and it's just a good FYI as far as, like, you know, Narcan is so widely available now. I mean, there's a lot of agencies that provide it, and apparently for darn good reason. I didn't realize that it was all that kind of widespread in Carroll County. You wouldn't think so, but goodness sakes. Um, but any anyways, uh, uh, they they were really glad that I was there. They'll, they meet every other month. Hour, lunch hour, you know, out at New Up and um, but anyways, I was certainly glad to go, say a lot of old friends and some great work being done, social services throughout the county. Uh, and then I got radio and paper today, and then, um, I guess I'll go with Mike to Board of Health tomorrow.
Also, I would like to add on mine. Last week, I made several trips down to M sixty-six, and as Zach said, the the project really looks good. It's gonna be a big improvement on that road.
Um, any comments from those in attendance? Courtney, what do we have for next week?
We have a public hearing for the interfund loan for the ten thousand, the Maple River, and that's all I have.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
There's a motion in a second. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye, aye, opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a second, I can't end the. Can't find the button.